Good evening, everyone. And thank you so much for coming to this evening's candidate forum for the first ever election of the Ypsilanti Community Schools Board of Education. I am Nancy Shuey and I am co-president, along with Mary Banks, of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor Area. We are very excited to be presenting this forum tonight. We are partnering with For a Better YPSI, a group of energetic, committed Ypsilanti citizens who have worked very hard to make this event happen tonight. And I'd like to introduce them. Laura Bean, who is the moderator, Lindsey Geringer, who's our timer, and Ben Miller, who is over there. They've worked so hard.
Thank you.
And I want to thank all the candidates for coming out this evening and participating in it. It's really important for the community to be able to meet you and to hear your voice. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots organization. Our membership is open to all persons, both men and women, over 18 years of age. We invite you to join us. Membership information is available on the table outside the door or on our website, l w v ann arbor dot org. The League does not support candidates or parties, but one of our important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls, and thus we bring you tonight's forum. At this point, Ben Miller from For a Better YPSI would like to say a few words.
Hi, my name is Ben from For a Better YPSI. For a Better YPSI was formed in spring 2014 as the Ypsilanti Mayoral Debate Committee in order to run the Ypsilanti Mayoral Debate that happened in July at the Ypsilanti District Library downtown. All members of For a Better YPSI are also members of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor Area. For a Better YPSI has a focus on sponsoring Ypsilanti-oriented, nonpartisan candidates fora. We are made up of Ben and Lindsey Geringer and Laura Bean, but we couldn't do it without the help of others. Thanks so much for the Ypsilanti Community Schools for hosting. Thanks so much for Martha Schmidt from Worm Farm Recordings for filming. Thanks so much to Jesse Miller for doing sound tonight. Thanks so much to Grant Schaefer for doing the note cards, which I'll explain in just a second. Thanks so much to Fritz Passo for general helpfulness. And thanks so much to Nancy Shuey and all of League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor Area for their general guidance so much. Oh, and Marta Valdez will also be helping with the note cards as well. And so the way the note cards works is to get questions from the audience. So about halfway through the questions, we will be passing out note cards. And a little bit before the last question that the committee has come up with, we'll be gathering them and presenting them to the moderator, Laura, who will be choosing from them. And also worth pointing out, the bathrooms are down the hall if anybody needs it. And now explaining the format and how tonight will be run is the moderator, Laura Bean.
Thanks, Ben. Tonight, we have 16 of our 18 school board candidates present. Mr. Van Der Worp did leave a message that he had a family emergency and couldn't attend tonight. I'm really gratified to see all the other candidates arrived here today. Thank you for your time today. The format for tonight's forum is as follows. Obviously, we have a large number of candidates. We're not going to ask each of our questions to every candidate. For each question, I'll be asking a subset of candidates to please come to the mic, and in turn, you'll have a chance to answer that specific question. Throughout the course of our questions tonight, each person will have the chance to answer the same number of questions. Okay, we're going to start before the questions with introductions by each of the six candidates. Each introduction will be one minute long. We'll go in order, starting with Ms. Meadows. And if you would like to start, Ms. Meadows, we're going to take one minute for each candidate and just go down. Please state your name and give your introduction, if you would, your platform, first school board candidate. Thank you.
Ms. Meadows is not here.
Oh, Ms. Meadows is not here? I'm sorry. Okay, let's start with Ms. Sheila Edwards.
Did I come to the microphone or did you forget?
Microphone, please.
My name is Maria Sheila Edwards, and I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It really means a lot to see everybody here supporting the candidates. Just a little bit about myself, the reason I'm running for the school board is because I want to be part of the solution. I was appointed as part of the seven-member board two years ago. I didn't have any formal affiliation with either district beforehand, except that I had a son who graduated from Ypsilanti in 2005. After he graduated, I didn't really like the way the district was going. And when I heard about the consolidation, I thought, this is a great chance to push the reset button and do some things differently. So I applied to be appointed, and I've been happy to serve for the last two years and help fulfill the community's vision for what they really want in a school district. Thank you.
Mr. Myers.
My name is Gregory Myers. I was a former Willa Run School Board member. I won the seat in the election in 2011. I served that for a year, and then, once the consolidation happened, I was appointed to the new Ypsilanti Community Schools Board. And also, we worked also on both boards for Willa Run and Ypsilanti. The reason I want to be on the school board is because I have four children, me and my wife. Been living in YPSI for over 12 years, and I want to make sure that these public schools are giving the benefits that I need for my children. And I also feel as though all the children in Ypsilanti are my children as well. Thank you.
Mr. Kirchman.
My name is Bill Kirchman. This is the first time I've ever run for any elected position. My wife and I have lived here since 2001. We have got exchange students, and we've had exchange students for a number of years and will continue to have them. Through their experiences in the school system, I believe that there are some pretty dramatic changes that need to occur within the system. My big themes are transparency, so you all, as well as us all, know what is going on, as well as unity, getting rid of the us versus them mentality, and developing a team so everybody, from the support staff to the teachers to the maintenance personnel, everybody is on the same sheet of music and working towards the same goal of establishing an effective school.
Thank you. Mr. Baines.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank For a Better Ypsilanti and the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. I think it's a real tribute to this town that there were 18 people willing to sign up to do this job, and I applaud my fellow candidates. And I think it's nice to know that the school district is going to be in safe hands, no matter what the community decides to do. I've been serving on Ypsilanti school boards now for the last eight years. I was one of the leaders in the consolidation process, along with my colleague, the president of Willa Run Board at that time, Mr. Garrett. I have two children that attended Ypsilanti schools. My son is now an engineer out in Boston, and my daughter is a history honors major at the University of Michigan, a junior this year. I've lived in Ypsilanti since 1987. We moved here because we love this town. We continue to love it, and I look forward to serving the community in one capacity or another for the foreseeable future. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sharif.
My name is Geneva Sharif. I'm a 2007 graduate of Ypsilanti High School. I was also a former teacher, middle school teacher, at a Detroit Public School Authorized Charter. And interestingly enough, I was the student representative to the Board of Education when I was a student. The reason why I'm running is because after I graduated, I went on to Hampton University. I came back, I became a teacher. I attended the University of Michigan and got a master's degree in education. I don't want my experience to be unique. I think that it should be the expectation for every student. I think the consolidation has the potential to be great, but we need to make sure that our teachers feel valued, our students feel safe, and we also need to ensure that our constituents and our community members are an intricate part of the school district. Thank you.
Ms. Hawkins.
My name is Celeste Hawkins, and I am currently a professor at Eastern Michigan University in the Social Work Department. I recently earned my doctorate degree in education. I am committed to this community. I'm committed to the students in this community. I have three kids in the district. They have been in the district since kindergarten, and I really want all of our children to be afforded the opportunity to have a first-class experience in education, and I'm committed to educational excellence. I'm committed to educational equity and making sure that we bring all of our students back in the full fold of participation by making sure every single child gets the education that they deserve in our community. Thank you.
Ms. Snedeker Horn.
My name is Linda Snedeker Horn, but I use Horn sometimes because Snedeker is a mouthful kind of unusual name. I've been on the school board before. I was first elected in 2006, and then again in 2011, right before the consolidation and after the consolidation, because they appointed a new school board, I wasn't appointed. I have two daughters who did attend Ypsilanti school districts. One has her master's in education, and the other one is attending EMU right now, thinking about communications. I'm running for the school board because I'm very passionate about education, and I believe that all kids should be successful in school, and they need good board members and good leaders to run a strong and vibrant school district. Thank you.
Ms. Champagne.
I'm running for the school board for the second time. I was elected in 2010, lost my seat during the consolidation. Since that time, I've been not happy with how things have been going, and I would like to try to change the course of this district and have our students have a better experience.
Ms. Irvine.
Hi, my name is Sharon Irvine, and I'm very familiar with Ypsilanti. I was a teacher at Artis Elementary, a teacher at West Middle School, a principal at Perry, and an HR director for a short period of time. I'm here because I believe in this community, and I believe in public schools. And I believe that our community can have a thriving, successful public school system because we have enough people in our community that believe in it and that gather support around that. And I believe that our children deserve one that is safe, where there are high expectations for achievement, and high expectations for community and employee relationships, and I want to see that happen. I'm very much devastated by the loss of very knowledgeable expertes, those that are in our community, that were in our public school system, who've moved on. And you see that institutional loss, and it's something that I hope to correct, or at least be a part of supporting a solution.
Mr. Wild.
Hello, my name is Mark Wildy. I was on the Willa Run School Board for 10 years, out of the last 12 years leading up to the consolidation. During that time, I had the opportunity to work closely with a lot of the students that were involved with the robotics team and the wilderness team, the wilderness camping experiences. And through that, I've learned the importance of involvement. I do have three children that went through the Willa Run District. My daughter, Pauline, is actually here in the audience tonight. She currently has three children, one of whom is at Adams. And I know the importance of involvement and keeping kids on track, and I would really like the opportunity to get back on the YPSI Board and assist with making sure that kids get the education that they're deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wildy. I'm sorry I mispronounced your name. Mr. Ragland.
My name is Dan Ragland. I'm honored to be trustee currently on the YPSI Community School Board. Been in the community since 1971. My wife has taught in the district. As a matter of fact, I think one of our candidates was one of her students. Also, I've graduated four kids out of the district. All are doing exceptionally well with their careers. I've got two grandkids, recent graduates. One of them is at Eastern right now. I'm on a couple of boards over there. I believe in public education. A lot of good work has occurred here. There's been a little bit of heartache in the process. I'd just like to see us be exceptionally successful. I'd like to see public education be in the forefront. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett.
My name is Don Garrett. I have been in this community since 1972. I am a graduate of Willa Run in the year of 1990, and I have two kids, one that's graduated from Willa Run and one is currently here. My experience being on the board, I've been on the board for five years. Willa Run, when it had the board, the Consolidated Board, and also the new Ypsilanti Community School Board. The reason why I do it is not for me. The reason why I do it is because I want to be a voice, not only for the community, but for the kids and for the teachers and for the administration. I believe if we can work in harmony and work together, we can make this happen. And I enjoy doing what I do because I love seeing the success of the students. Thank you.
Ms. Miller.
Hello, I'm KJ Miller. Thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you for hosting. I am a longtime resident of Ypsilanti, the city. Currently, I used to live in the township. I'm running for school board because I feel very strongly about our community, and I think that a public educational system that is successful is absolutely imperative for our community to also survive and to succeed. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology. I worked for many years as an adolescent therapist, working with adolescents and their families, and helping them to achieve resolutions of several problems that they were experiencing. I'm currently an attorney in the area, and I have been doing that for several years as well. I have a lot of experience in working on listening carefully and evaluating information, and then helping to achieve resolutions and successes that everyone can be proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Jefferson.
My name is Ricky Jefferson. I am a lifelong resident of Ypsilanti, graduate of Ypsilanti High School. Also, I had three daughters that attended here and graduated. Got some grandchildren inside the system right now. I will be a former city council member come after the election. I moved out of the city to the township. And being in the council, I was able to view and get a bigger picture of the city of Ypsilanti and all the factors that make it a great city. And so I wanted to see what I could do outside in the township to still add expertise in being a person that can bring about solutions and give problem-solving and critical thinking to help our children achieve, but most of all, to make this a success as this merger has happened without trying to do it the hard way, but allowing myself to help by allowing everyone else to help.
And Ms. Schindler.
Hello, my name is Meredith Schindler. I have been a resident of Ypsilanti since 2000. I was a parent in the Ypsilanti schools for a very long time. My son is a 2013 graduate, the last class of the old district. I am the executive director of Ann Arbor Academy, which is a private school for children with learning disabilities, and have done that job for a number of years. I have a lot of management experience, obviously, with that. I also was a professor of biology at Washtenaw Community College for 12 years. So I've seen what it takes to succeed in college. I see what it takes to run a successful school. The same is true for a successful school district. There are a lot of things that can happen. This district has so much potential, and we can help it realize that potential with specific actions that we can put into place. And so I hope to have the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. For the following questions, I'll be asking three, four, or five candidates to please approach the mic, so that as a group, each candidate has a chance to be asked an equal number of questions. And for question number one, I'm going to ask four candidates to please approach the mic, Mr. Jefferson, Mr. Myers, Mr. Bates, and Ms. Sharif, please. Question number one is pretty long. According to the Michigan Department of Education's top-to-bottom ranking of schools in the state, using 2013 to 2014 data, all of the schools within the YCS scored at or below the eighth percentile statewide, with Holmes Elementary scoring at the zero percentile. The majority of Ann Arbor District schools scored between the 80th and 99th percentile. At the same time, within Washtenaw County, a Bridge Magazine analysis of 2012-2013 data showed that Ypsilanti schools received the second-highest amount of per pupil funding in the county at $10,914, directly following Ann Arbor schools, which have a per pupil funding of $11,016. Given the similar levels of funding, what factors account for this school performance disparity? Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. Let's start with Mr. Jefferson, please.
Well, you have a new system where teachers are coming in, and some seem to be unhappy with the situation and are leaving early. Then you also have an administration that's fresh also, and the school board that's fresh also. So the things that are coming down have to have some cohesiveness to them, and I don't think that has gelled yet. I think that's a problem that would always happen when you're beginning something new. And so, given time, over time, those factors should change. And also, with our students not achieving well, there has to be some type of challenge in dealing with our community that is not only parents, but also businesses and those who are not parents, to be involved some way in helping these children when they go home, and so that the scholastic abilities that they have can be more nurtured, not just in the school system, but the community will also hold them accountable. I think accountability is another thing with the financing of us receiving so much for each student. There has to be some accountability, transparency of that accountability of how this money is being spent.
Mr. Myers.
Can you give me the numbers, just the dollar amounts, one more time, please?
The dollar amounts are $10,914 per pupil for Ypsilanti schools and $11,016 for Ann Arbor schools, according to the Bridge Magazine analysis.
According to the Bridge Magazine analysis. As a school board member, I will have to humbly disagree with those numbers. There's much more of a discrepancy in the dollar amounts between what Ann Arbor is getting and what YPSI is getting. Not to say that that's an excuse or anything like that. I do believe that it's more closer to, it's between $7,000 to $8,000. I don't have the exact number in my mind right now. But so, YPSI has a significant amount less resources than Ann Arbor does. Also, with the state causing school districts to pay out such a high percentage in retirement, that's affected the schools as well here in YPSI. So there's a lot less resources that is going to the students in the classroom. Also, with this consolidation, there's been a lot of turnover in leadership and with the school board, things like that. That's also, I would say, affected classrooms as well. Just not having that cohesiveness of leadership is a big factor. And also, we have a different type of demographic here in Ypsilanti than we do in Ann Arbor. But I just say that those numbers don't really show the disparity that Ann Arbor has with Ypsilanti. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baines.
Thank you very much. Those are the reasons that I ran for the school board. We've been caught in a cycle, both districts, the Ypsilanti and the Willa Run, for some time now, in this declining enrollment, leading to having to constantly restructure and make cuts that affected our ability to enhance achievement. One of the reasons for going into the consolidation was the opportunity to stop that cycle, break it, and start in a new direction. I'm hopeful, and I think we've made some very, very positive changes in the last year. In order for student achievement to increase, students have to feel safe. We've initiated the restorative justice process as a new initiative in our schools, and I think our students and teachers are responding to it well. Commitment by the district over five years for cultural competency training for all of our teachers is also going to improve relationships in the classrooms. And one of the things that we know research says is for students to achieve, they have to feel strong bonds and good relationships with their colleagues, with their other students and their teachers. So I think the answer is, some of these new initiatives that we've put in place, they need time to work, but we're already seeing some very positive results, and I think that things are moving in the right direction. We do have a long ways to go, but we're doing the right things right now to try and change the direction of the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Sharif.
I actually think what a few members said prior, we are not receiving the same amount or nearly as close to Ann Arbor Public Schools, but I do think that we still have the potential to make sure that our students are still achieving. I think that the number-one thing for me is culture. I think that teachers don't feel valued, teachers aren't inspired, they don't have the same glow in their eyes. And I think that those are the individuals who are the closest, those are the closest individuals to our students. So if they don't have the resources to do or even feel valued to do so, it's going to be hard for our students to achieve. Despite the demographics, I believe that if we hold our students to high expectations, they will perform. It's guaranteed. I've worked in urban education. There are charter schools and public schools that are receiving similar per-student dollars, and their students are at least making growth. So when you hear about schools not making any growth, I think we need to think about, what are we doing? And making sure whatever it is that we're doing, we're using the right resources at a small amount in order to make change and not so many things, because I think that that has the potential to hopefully, well, I think it has the potential to, one, not see any growth, and I also think that it has the potential to have people question how you're allocating the resources and why how you're allocating the resources and why we're not seeing the appropriate results needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharif. Question number two is for five of our candidates and I would ask if Ms. Hawkins, Ms. Irvine, Mr. Ragland, Mr. Garrett, and Ms. Miller would please approach the mic. Thank you. Question number two is based on the same data that I talked about in question number one. According to the Michigan Department of Education's top-to-bottom ranking of schools in the state using 2013-2014 data, all of the schools within the YCS scored at or below the eighth percentile statewide. At the same time, the 2012 Ypsilanti District Superintendent Total Compensation, as measured by the Mackinac Center for Public Policy, was $189,175 or within the top 20% of school superintendent compensation packages statewide. I'm using this figure because the current compensation is not available on the YCS website. Why is the Ypsilanti Superintendent Compensation Package relatively high when school performance percentiles are among the worst in the state and will you adjust this amount when the new superintendent is hired at the end of this school year? Let's start with Ms. Hawkins, please.
As it relates to the compensation package for the superintendent, I guess I want to say that I want to talk about those two items separately. I think the compensation package for the superintendent should not be necessarily the bar or the measure that indicates whether or not our school district is successful. I think we have to change how our district teaches our children. And to that point, we have to have high-quality teachers, we have to have excellent instruction, we have to hold our children to excellent standards. So it doesn't really matter, in my opinion, how much a superintendent is getting paid. It matters what we're doing in the classroom every day, it matters how we're engaging our students, it matters what we're doing from a cultural perspective, how we're embracing the diversity that's in the city and in the school district. And once we bring all our children into the full fold of participation and ensuring that they receive the education that they deserve, that takes not just a superintendent, that takes our community, it takes teachers, it takes staff, it takes everybody rolling their sleeves up to, all hands on deck to really get the outcomes that we want. I don't think it's necessarily putting the, the brunt of the responsibility, although the superintendent is here and, and many of those decisions trickle down to a practice level. I think we need to be really conscious of what everybody else is doing to make sure that all of our students are being educated in the way that we envision our students being educated and leading this world as we see it.
Thank you. Ms. Irvine?
Well, as the HR director who managed the contracts, I can tell you that that is an error. It is not $189,000. At the time that it came out, that correction was made, it was certainly closer to about $130,000 with benefit compensation with that. So that said, the compensation package at that time was the second highest in Washtenaw County, second to Ann Arbor. But I do agree with Celeste in that compensation does not, is not an indicator, I don't think, of quality administration, how much we pay an individual. I believe that quality administration comes from having a heart for the work that you're doing and those people who work because they love what they do often will do so regardless of whatever that compensation may be. If, I would say that, speaking for myself directly, if I was faced with a compensation package like that, my preference would be that that money be used and spent towards our employees who need that, who need to stay in our district, who need to be a part of the students' lives that are there. Now, having said that, it's very tough to be competitive. It's a difficult district. And so saying that, you also have to attract and you have to maintain leadership at that top level. But I don't think it has anything to do with achievement. I do believe that, that administrative stability is the most important thing we should achieve, however we are able to achieve it.
Thank you. Mr. Ragland?
Thank you. I guess I have to echo the sentiment of a couple of folks that preceded me here that you can't put it on the shoulders of a superintendent that was already working in a district, was already earning a wage, was already earning a salary. I don't know that it's fair to go back and say that this person caused this or that or the other. The fact of the matter is we had contracts we had to honor and we did not break any of those contracts. There's a lot of people put a lot of things on the line for both districts. Some of those folks aren't here any longer. It doesn't have anything necessarily do directly with the student achievement. Is student achievement important? Absolutely is. We certainly have to raise the bar. We certainly have to get our kids there. That's the whole focus. We brought two cultures together and I'd rather focus my attention on that. And I do think if we end up with a new superintendent, in order to attract that superintendent, who knows what our salary might have to be, I hope we don't have to go outside the box, but when you're trying to hire talent, you may have to pay the going rate.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Thank you. I'm dealing with the compensation package that was the prior superintendent, but let me say this on, on the behalf, I've worked with three superintendents now and I would not want their job. So if you, you put a dollar amount on what they do, you can't. They deal with the community, they deal with the teachers, they deal with the board, they deal with the kids, they deal with a lot. So to talk about the compensation, compensation that they get, I don't think you could pay them enough, but at the same time, you do have to be, you know, can't pay them too much and can't pay them too little. Now going back with the achievement, I think sometimes we need to talk about the elephant in the room. When you try to compare Ann Arbor and YPSI, it's two different, it's like apples and oranges. The problems that our kids face in Ypsilanti, the kids in Ann Arbor do not face. The problems that we have in Ypsilanti that they don't have in Ann Arbor. And kudos to the teachers that we have. We have excellent teachers. I just believe because of the situation that we are in, we don't have the resources or didn't have the resources to do what we do. Given the right resources, given the right environment, I do believe we have the people in the buildings, at the, at the leadership levels that can do what it takes for the kids to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I think it's clear that everyone here tonight and everyone in our community is really trying to foster a culture of success, a culture of success for the students, but that has to come from the administration, down through the teachers, down through the staff, so that the kids feel like they are being encouraged and supported in their success. It is incumbent upon the superintendent to help foster that culture. And if a superintendent is unable to do so, then as a board, we do need to look at whether we need to look for a new superintendent, what that compensation package needs to be, what types of skills are needed and what type of skills are being brought to the table. Everyone needs to be held accountable, including the superintendent, possibly most importantly, the superintendent. And this is where we really need to do the research and listen and look at the data and talk to the people that are on the front lines, as well as the community, the families, the students, to find out what is needed and what is being done for that culture of success.
Thank you, candidates. Question number three is for three of our candidates and I would ask if Ms. Edwards, Mr. Kirkjin, and Mr. Jefferson could please approach the mic. Thank you. We mentioned Holmes Elementary. In addition to a balanced or a year-round school year, what changes are being implemented at Holmes Elementary? Let's start with Ms. Edwards.
Because Holmes Elementary is a priority school, they have a district improvement plan. They also, in addition to the balanced calendar, have received some grant money as well to make sure that their school is ready to open early. They needed some facility upgrades. Balanced calendar is very important because it shrinks the summer slides, so teachers don't need to spend the month of September catching kids up and reminding them what they learned last year. It also comes with intercessions during the year, which teachers can use to get kids caught up with material that they may be struggling with, or they can use it for enrichment purposes as well. Holmes Elementary is, they have a fantastic staff, they've got a wonderful leader, Mr. Raski, and we're very proud of the work they've been doing there.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkjin?
I'm sort of at a disadvantage here because I'm not an incumbent. I don't know all of the changes that have occurred at Adams Elementary. What I think is probably useful in that scenario is to, you know, take a look at the success that they've had with the new model and see what, if parts or all of it can be used in, in other schools.
And Mr. Jefferson?
Well, based upon what I know about the school change, it gets a calendar to be all year round, I think it's a great start for a new system that needs improvement. And what better way than to have children being able to learn all year round when we know, even from my experience, that the summertime gives them too much time away from school, which would give them a harder time to start back again. Not only that, you have a high percentage of poverty, students that are receiving free lunches. And this would also give those students an opportunity to be more better fed even during the summer. Everyone should know that a better fed student is a, is a, is a more alert student. So the changes that they're making are pretty positive, I believe, and that's about all I know. I know that they're, they're speaking about bringing a first grade class, they're a seventh grade class, I have to read it again, but that is something that I'd have to look into, whether that should be something that is preceded to, is, should happen next. But as far as that goes, I mean, it's a great thing that they're doing the calendar year all the way around.
Thank you, everyone. Next question is also for three candidates and I would ask if Ms. Hawkins, Ms. Champagne, and Mr. Wildy would please approach the mic. Thank you. Question number four. What is your plan for the district's six vacant school buildings? Let's start with Ms. Hawkins, please.
For the buildings that are vacant within our district, I know that one of our board trustee members in particular has been in numerous conversations about the use of those facilities. We haven't decided how we will distribute the use of those facilities, but there are many conversations that are happening about how we can use those buildings in a more efficient and effective way, whether it be to serve the community, whether it be to, I'm not sure if any of the buildings are planned to be opened again for educational uses, but we are certainly in conversations with a number of organizations, a number of businesses to talk about ways that we can partner, ways that we can extend and transfer ownership over to some of those constituents in our community so that we don't have properties just sitting vacant, because it's an eyesore in, in many respects and it's just not a good use of our funding. But we have to be very strategic in the way that we decide how those buildings will be used and if, and how it will benefit the, the larger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Champagne?
Well, obviously, since I'm not on the board, I don't have a plan, but if, if it were left up entirely to me, I think we should do some, take a very active role in getting rid of the buildings, either selling them or raising them, because they can provide a future home for charter schools, which we need to do everything within our power to not let that happen. If it were really up to me and I, in a perfect world, I would love to open up more elementary schools, even if it meant closing, not closing, but using the bigger schools as a high school, middle school, whatever, but we, the, closing the elementary schools to me is the worst thing because it's too, everybody wants to have their own district, their own local school, and they're used to putting their kids on a bus for middle school and high school, so it's not as important. But it isn't up to me. We have to do what we need to do for, to make sure our district is solvent. We need to address the issue of the closed buildings and either get rid of them or get, sell them or raise them, which is unfortunate, but that's the way it needs to be.
Thank you. Mr. Wildy?
Well, of all the questions that have been asked, this is probably the one that is the hardest one to answer. Again, you know, I'm not on the board currently, so I don't know what the current plans are. Selling it would be beneficial as far as temporarily raising some money, but unfortunately, that also, you know, who's in the market for a used school building? That's going to be charter schools. So you got to be careful who you sell to. The possibility of leveling them and selling the property off is, is there. Again, would have to look at all options that were available and choose what's best for the district at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for question five, we have four candidates. I'm going to ask Mr. Bates, Ms. Sharif, Ms. Nidikar Horn, and Ms. Champagne to please come up. Thank you. Okay, according, question number five, we have four questions to go, including this one. According to Superintendent Laura Lysiski quoted in an October 4 MLive story, the preliminary student count in the district was around 4,300 students. This number is down from 4,542 students enrolled in YCS during the new district's first year. Although this school year's drop in enrollment was predicted, what is your plan to reverse declining enrollment? Why don't we start with Mr. Bates, please?
Thank you very much. We knew that we would see a dip in enrollment this year because of a charter school that Eastern Michigan University opened up. They originally had planned that, opened that building a year earlier and, and through discussions agreed to delay it a year. The, the question you asked is about increasing enrollment. You know, every parent wants what's best for their children and I'm absolutely convinced, and you've heard it from several other candidates, that the Ypsilanti Community Schools is well positioned to provide a really, really high-quality education to our children. As we improve the safety of our schools through some of the initiatives that we've undertaken, as we improve instruction by supporting our teachers more and giving them more tools to work with our children, we will begin to see enrollment increase. The word will spread. People that are, are doing something great will let other people know. One of the things that I'm excited about is the, the homeschool project with the balanced calendar and we know from experience and talking with other districts that that becomes very attractive and there are often waiting lists for those schools. The secondary options that provide opportunities for college and career credentials for kids are also going to be very attractive to parents. So I think that we're on the right course and we'll begin to see enrollment increase over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sharif?
I believe that in order to increase enrollment, we need to make sure we're giving people something, we're offering something to families that's worthwhile. And I think that top of mind, that's student achievement, that's the culture, that's the community involvement, and I think that right now we're not in a place where people are confident to send their kids. I think that charter schools and alternative schools, it's only a threat to districts who are chaotic, chaotic, right? I think that the reason why we have charter schools and we have alternative options for our children is because we're not providing the best option. I think it's important to keep in mind as well that we're a school of choice and being a school of choice, we also have the option of getting more students. So when you think of Ann Arbor Public Schools increasing their school of choice allotment and thinking about why students are leaving, I think that parents want to make sure that they're providing their students with the best quality education, but we also need to make sure we're equipping our teachers with the resources in order to instruct our students to higher academic achievement.
Thank you. Ms. Nidikar Horn?
Thank you. I would say that to increase enrollment, a lot of things need to happen. First of all, we do need to be First of all, we do need to be a strong and vibrant school, but we also need to talk about, which is marketing, talk about the really good things that are going on in YPSI schools, and there are good things that are going on. I remember a time as a board member, we, the administration, the board, staff went out and knocked on doors and talked to people. I think that's another way of marketing what's going on in YPSI. But all together, working as partners and showing that we are a strong district and that we can be an excellent district as well, we have to partner with each other, meaning the board, administration, the staff, and everything, and work very well together. And I think that is a possibility. So that's what I feel that can help to increase enrollment.
Thank you. Ms. Champagne?
I wholeheartedly agree with everything that Ms. Sharif said. I think that the enrollment figures are a reflection of the uncertainty within the school district right now, the fact that we only lost 100 or so. I'm curious, you didn't mention the figure, but I'm wondering about what the figure was from the fall of the previous year as compared to now. It seems like the drop was probably significantly higher, and I think that's a reflection of the unhappiness that is rampant in the district right now, which is reflected in the uncertainty between, of the staff and the administration. And we need to fix that, and then, when we're stable, the students will return.
Thank you. For our last three questions, we have an opportunity for three candidates to answer each one, and for question number six, I'm going to ask Ms. Sheila Edwards, Ms. Irvine, and Mr. Garrett, please. If you would, thank you. Question six. At a June 2012 Michigan Legislature Joint House/Senate Subcommittee meeting on deficit districts, State Superintendent Mike Flanagan stated that, "If it was my decision, I would change over to countywide school districts." Flanagan suggested significant cost savings would result from fully centralized administrative and academic functions at the county level, giving authority to the Washtenaw ISD, for example. Do you agree? Why don't we start with Ms. Sheila Edwards, please?
Well, I suppose this is a hypothetical question, since this isn't actually an issue that's facing us, but we have gone through a consolidation, so we know a little bit about it. There are a number of states that have countywide schools. I think Virginia is one of them. They also have very high-performing schools in Virginia. However, I don't think it would result in cost savings. When you have a county the size of Washtenaw with the number of children that we have here, you'd have to, you'd have to add layers of administration to track the schools and the population and the achievement and the teachers, and I think it would be a lot more complex than Superintendent Flanagan is suggesting. However, like I said before, it's been done on other states, so I'm a big fan of benchmarking. It's always good to see what other people are doing, and if it works for them, to see how it would play in our situation. But you can't just assume that it would be, you can't just assume that it would be a solution that could carry over directly into our state.
Thank you. Ms. Irvine?
Well, I'm sure it would be a great relief to Flanagan to get rid of all that headache that is local districts, because it is much easier to speak directly to ISDs, and that is their primary audience, the primary interaction. But unless a county actually represents the demographics that are unique to your local community, you cannot expect that a consolidated district like that will ever be able to manage the complexity that is in each different locale. And it is extremely important that we don't mistake fiscal efficiencies, which may produce cost savings, and the politics of education and democracy, which really have no connection to cost savings. It is about people, and it is about their children, and it is not about money. So are there services that could be consolidated? Absolutely. Business service could absolutely be consolidated. We can get an audit from anywhere, including the ISD. Could we manage the relationships with our parents from the distance of a consolidated ISD? Absolutely not. The needs of our kids? Absolutely not. The relationships between our teachers and our kids and our community? Absolutely not.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
With that solution, I would have to disagree. Once again, like has been stated, money doesn't solve everything, but that's the one thing that we look at when we do things like this, to make it one big unit, with the stakeholders in the local community will lose their voice, and that's one thing that you don't want to do. Like I stated earlier, what works for Ann Arbor may not work for Ypsilanti, may not work for Lincoln. We're all different, and we all learn differently. So in order for that to happen, you've got to have people that has hands-on relationships with the kids in the community so they know what it takes. So many times, we get caught up on what the numbers say about what kids learn. Well, I know in the Ypsilanti Community School District, they learn way more than what the numbers teach, but it's unfortunate we do everything based on standardized testing. So to consolidate the whole district as one, on WISD, I think would be a slap in the face to the community and to the people that are presently in the community school district now.
Thank you. Ms. Schindler?
There are some consolidated programs that are working well, and I think that consolidated programs that can offer more diversity of opportunities in the district or in the county are a good thing. But I echo the concern for the removal of local control. Ypsilanti, the Ypsilanti Community Schools, is comprised primarily of students who belong to historically marginalized groups of people, and I don't see why that would change if we consolidated as a county. And I would be very concerned that our students' needs would not be met by such a wide-ranging, you know, in sort of industrial, sort of factory-type approach that would have to come with that. So, no, I mean, I think we need to get it together in our own districts so that we are giving the students what they need and be open to opportunities where economies of scale can be useful to our students, can add to the, to the achievement of our students and the opportunities for our students, but that do not take away from our identity as our own Ypsilanti Community School District.
Thank you. For question seven, I'm going to ask Ms. Myers, Mr. Ragland, and Ms. Miller, please. Question seven. Upon election, what is the first change you would make in the operations of the YCS? Mr. Myers?
The first change that I would make after the election, it would have to be looking more at policies and procedures. The role of the school board, the school board has three roles, hiring the superintendent, writing policy, and giving oversight. The very first thing is also to continue to implement the vision that the, that the district has as well. It is the school board's job to make that vision crystal clear to the superintendent so that the superintendent is able to carry out that vision day by day in the district. So I guess there'll be a couple of things, looking at the policies and procedures again to see what in there can help us develop the vision that we want to be the first choice in education here in Ypsilanti. So it's very important that the school board comes together to, to really crystallize that vision, so that now that can be passed down to the superintendent, down to the principals, down to administration, and all the way down to the teachers and to the students.
Thank you. Mr. Ragland?
Thank you. I think some of the things that need to happen are pretty much in place. They're starting to get legs, as they say. One of the things we need is a better plan. We're working on that right now. We've created a dashboard. That needs to come to fruition. We're trying to make it better than it was. We talked about, we had YCS 1.0, and we're looking at 2.0, and 2.0's got to be better than 1.0. So there's, there's a lot of things that need to improve. We need to continue to involve our community partners, and maybe some of you sitting out there attended some of the committee meetings that we had. We talked about transparency. We need to keep that going. We need to keep you engaged as a community, because after all, you gave us some marching orders. We've attempted to stay on target with those. We need to make sure we live up to the promises we made and make sure those things happen. Also, you know, the things that we're doing with Ypsilanti, with Washtenaw Community College, with Eastern Michigan University, University of Michigan, just take advantage of every resource that's at our disposal to make sure we are the first choice in education at YCS.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
I agree that the first thing that we would have to do would be to increase transparency, to make sure that everyone received the information that they needed, whether that be a community member or a teacher. I would seek input from everyone involved so that we could then determine what those goals were and what that crystallized vision was, and then distribute that information so that we could get as much help in improving the school district as we could.
Thank you. And for our last question, I'd like to ask Mr. Kirkchin, Ms. Hawkins, Mr. Wildy, and Ms. Schindler, please. Mr. Ragland touched upon some of the positive aspects of the district, and he discussed some of the good things that were happening with the schools. Since consolidation, in your opinion, what has improved within YCS? Why don't we start with Mr. Kirkchin, please?
I think probably the most positive thing to come from the consolidation is people are finally starting to take a look around and say, "We've got to get involved." I mean, that's got, that is what has got me running after the consolidation. I'm not happy with the way things are running, and it is a positive thing that we've got 18 of us up here all wanting to get involved.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkins?
Some of the things that I'm really proud of, that we've accomplished in YCS 1.0, would be really staying true to the vision that we discussed with the community and really had all hands on deck to develop that vision for redesigning a new school district. Some of those include commitments, a five-year commitment to cultural proficiency in our district, making sure we have college career readiness for our students available so they can be duly enrolled, they can get a certificate if they would like at Washtenaw Community College. We have a number of high school options for our students, and it's really unprecedented in this county, really, because we offer so much to our students. So I'm really proud of the commitments that we made and are really following through on in terms of what we said we would deliver as a school district. Obviously, it's only one year, and there's a lot of work that still has yet to be done, but I think that every board member who has been appointed has really committed to the vision, is really committed to the pillars that we've established as a community, and we really want to see this vision get carried out, because there's so much at stake for our students, for our families, for the community, and it's important that we not just talk about what needs to be done, but we roll up our sleeves and put our hands on deck to make sure we ensure that our kids get the best education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wildy?
Well, some of the positive things that have occurred, when you look at the enrollment decline, when the two districts were separated, the current enrollment decline is lower, so that's a step in a positive direction. The merger has allowed for the STEM Academy, where a lot of the students are involved in the robotics program, and the consolidation of the two districts has made for one stronger New Tech portion over that at Artus. Overall, I think the district is improving. Obviously, there is room for improvement, and, you know, those need to be addressed and worked on.
Thank you. Ms. Schindler?
I've been happy to hear about the athletes that were recruited to top schools. I've been happy to hear about the small victories that happen every day in classrooms. Every teacher here, every teacher in the district, has reached a child during this last year that would not have otherwise had their life changed by the ability for that teacher to reach that child and educate that child and make sure that that child, you know, had a brighter future because of that teacher. That's huge, and that's happening all the time. So it's important that we know that not every triumph gets press. In fact, most of them don't. Obviously, I wouldn't be here if I thought that overall, there had been a lot of changes for the positives since the consolidation. The economy of scale is a good thing. It truly is. And combining the two communities that were one community, that really are one community, is a good thing as well. But there's a lot more that can be done, that should be being done for the students and to support the teachers, so that even more of those moments that are triumphs that none of us know about, but I guarantee you are happening, can happen for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Schindler. This concludes the portion of the forum consisting of questions prepared by For a Better Ypsilanti and the League of Women Voters. Before we go to audience questions, I'd like to take the opportunity to finish as we started, with everyone having a chance to speak on the following topic. I'd like each candidate to please take 30 seconds, and you can, you can come up to the mic and turn if you like, or speak from your chair if that's more convenient, to answer the following question. Do you have, or have you had, or will you have, children in the YPSI school district? Why or why not? Let's start with Ms. Sheila Edwards, please.
As I stated in my introduction, I have a son who graduated in 2005 from Ypsilanti High School. Darrell is a classmate of David's. David lives in Brooklyn, New York right now, and he works in radio. I can trace his career path in radio directly from his drama classes with Ms. Pete, Mrs. Segal. He had a great experience here. After he left, like I said, I wasn't happy with the direction of the district, and we chose to enroll our two other children in a charter district. I just want to say, since the consolidation, we've come back with our third one. He's a student at WyMA, and we've been very, very happy with that program and hope to expand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Yes, as I stated in my introduction, I'm married and I have four children. My oldest is 10, will be 10 next month. She's attending WyMA. My second daughter, Jasmine, is at home. She's experiencing the balanced calendar there. Gregory Jr., he's at Ford Elementary, and then we have little Timothy, who's only two right now, but I do plan on having him in the district. He runs my house, but I do plan on having him in the district. I believe in public schools. I believe in this community. I believe in this vision. I believe in what Ypsilanti stands for. It's about community, and I know that my children will succeed here because the community cares about all children.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkchin?
As I mentioned in my introduction, we have foreign exchange students. We've run our fourth foreign exchange student, all of whom have gone to Ypsilanti Public Schools. With the exchange student program, it can go on indefinitely. With the exchange student program, it can go on indefinitely. We'll continue to have exchange students as long as, I mean, for the foreseeable future. It's that rewarding an experience. I want our exchange students to come to a school that challenges them and makes them feel welcome, and as they do with our family, as part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bates?
Thank you very much. I have two children. My son Andrew, the oldest, did the Perry Chapel West Middle School. They both did. My daughter Karen followed suit. My daughter attended Ypsilanti High School, and as I mentioned, is now a junior at University of Michigan in the History Honors Program. My son Andrew, after completing West Middle School, qualified for a full-ride scholarship to the Cranbrook School, which he decided to take advantage of. Both of my children can attribute their success to their teachers that they had here and the experiences that they had, and couldn't be happier. So we're very pleased. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Sharif?
I do not have any children in the district, but I am a proud graduate of the district, and I have a particular interest in the district because my classmates are now becoming parents. They're getting married, and they're putting their stake in the ground. So I think it's important for me to ensure that their children have the opportunity to a quality education in Ypsilanti. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkins?
I am married, and I have three kids in the district. They've attended Ypsilanti Schools since they were in kindergarten. I have two children at Wyman in fifth and seventh grade, and I have a son who's a third grader at Estabrook Elementary. I've been very pleased with the direction of the district. I'm committed to this community, so I want my kids to grow up in a community where they can go to a school locally. I want to be committed to the district in any way that I can, and making sure that I help to shape the direction of the district because my kids are most important and precious to me. So their, my investment is very deep in the city of Ypsilanti in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Netticar Horn?
I have two daughters, which I mentioned earlier, and they both attended Ypsilanti School District. The youngest one graduated from YPSY High. The older one, after she completed middle school, chose to go to the Ann Arbor Schools because she was getting herself in trouble and figured that if she go to a different school, maybe she won't get in as much trouble, which she didn't. And I'm very proud of her because she did graduate with a master's degree in special education, so she is a teacher as well.
Thank you. Ms. Champagne?
I have two children. The oldest one graduated in 2012 from YPSY High. She attended here all of the years except for one year where we moved to Dexter as a failed experiment. She was in kindergarten here, and she went the entire time. My other daughter started in kindergarten. She's now first year in ECA, and she was in YPSY High last year.
Thank you. Ms. Irvine?
Yes. My son is a student at Wyman, was a student at Estabrook before that. His father was a student in YPSY. His father was a student in YPSY, and his father was a student in YPSY. It is definitely a lineage commitment, certainly to this area, and we have been thrilled with every teacher and every principal that he has had along the way.
Thank you. Mr. Wildy?
As I stated in my opening, I did have three children that attended Willow Run for all 13 years, and two of them are married, and their husbands also attended Willow Run. My daughter, right now, has three children, one who is just starting in kindergarten at Adams. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ragland?
Yep. I have a daughter Kimberly, who's a firefighter here in the township. My daughter Stephanie works for Calidaire. She's in IT maintenance. Ryan, just fresh out of the military, is still trying to figure out what he's going to do next. And then Jenna is a lawyer, and she loves her work. One granddaughter is at Eastern Michigan University. The other granddaughter is a homemaker, and then I've got to wait for a great-grandson to get here, but I'm hoping I'm pushing for him. And the way I see it, all the kids in this district are my kids.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett?
Yes, I have a daughter that goes here. She's in the seventh grade. Yes, I will keep her here. If you tried to move her, she wouldn't. She bleeds grizzly. She loves going to school there. Every day, she talks about her experiences there, and she's the reason why I do what I do.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
For those of you who don't know, Bill Kirchlin's my husband, so some of this will be repetitive. We do host exchange students, and we are on our fourth exchange student, who's currently going to New Tech, and I've been really pleased with New Tech this year. But what Bill didn't tell you is that our three prior students all went to the high school here, and we were not allowed to put an exchange student in this high school this year. The exchange program would not let us because of the difficulties that they had last year with all the exchange students. We also have an 11-year-old son who's having an alternative education at a private school, but I would really like to bring him back to the school. He's involved in YPSY Little League, YPSY Youth Theater, and Fly Children's Arts Center, so he's very much part of this community.
Thank you. Mr. Jefferson?
Yes, I'm married, and I have five daughters, and one lives in Romulus, one lives in Toledo, one lives in Redford, one lives in Ann Arbor, and there's one in Ypsilanti. She has two grandchildren that I help her with because she's a single parent at Estabrook, and one at Perry CDC, and they love being in that school system, and I love helping them out. I also have a lot of children that I work with in the South Side of the community that I always impress upon them, the importance of getting a quality education and making Ypsilanti proud of them, so that the reputation will precede them.
Thank you. Ms. Schindler?
I have two sons, both of whom started kindergarten here. The oldest one, as I mentioned before, graduated from YPSY High in 2013. He's at Loyola University in Chicago, doing very, very well, arguing with the Jesuits at every opportunity. And my younger one did stay all the way through his freshman year here at YPSY High, which was last year. There were so many problems. He didn't have a textbook for geometry class despite repeated requests for one, among other issues. So he is no longer in the district, and that makes me very sad, but I want something better for the kids who are here.
Thank you. To finish tonight's event, we've taken some questions from the audience. We definitely want to hear the audience's voice and have them give a chance to direct some questions to each candidate. I'd like to give each candidate, in turn, a chance to answer one of these randomly selected questions. Could you please take 90 seconds to answer your question? This time, let's start on this side of the table, and I'd like to ask Ms. Schindler. You just sat down. Sorry about that. Yes, if you would like to approach the mic, please. Thank you. Here's an audience question. In 90 seconds, we are facing tremendous staff turnover in the district. Please explain how you would address this issue.
Well, so, there's a couple of reasons why you might have staff turnover. There's a lot of reasons. But the big one, as it seems to me, is that teachers don't feel supported. They don't necessarily feel safe, and I have that firsthand, and they don't feel empowered. And my vision, actually, for the district, and really what needs to happen, is that teachers, of course, need to feel empowered. They need to understand that the administration has their backs, because that's going to bring teacher morale up, staff morale up. You have to create a safe environment for the people that are here all the time, and the teachers and the staff are the people doing the job. They're in the trenches all the time. They are the ones directly impacting the students' lives. And so if they don't feel supported, and I know that they do not, or at least many of them do not, then they're not going to be able to achieve. I have seen this in other places that I've worked, and you do need to work very hard to make a coherent staff and faculty feeling and culture. Also, raising wages and so forth are really good things, but it's more about the culture, feeling supported, feeling empowered.
Thank you, Ms. Schindler. Mr. Jefferson? Another audience question. What is the district's current policy for dealing with truancy? Is it working? What changes do you feel need to be made to address this issue?
Earlier this year, I believe it was, the truancy policy decided to include the Washington County court system, to have some incentive for parents after so many days of being, 10 days of being absent, that the parents would have to have some accountability. I'm not sure how that's going to work. One thing that I do feel that we, that there is an attempt to make a parent accountable, but I don't know if you're going to do that through the justice system with the threat of some type of judicial punishment or reprimand. I don't believe that that's the way. For me, that's fear, and I like to do things that's based upon knowing that there's some hope. So it's not giving them any hope, but there's putting a lot of fear in their hearts.
Thank you. Ms. Miller? Audience question. Perry School is located next to an area that has been called the Most Dangerous Acre in the county, with three murders and four shots fired incidents. Would the candidates support moving Perry?
I don't know. This, I really believe that as a board member, my job is to gather information and find out what the staff, the families, the students, the teachers, the community wants to happen, and get the data to support whatever decision needs to be made. Without having that data, I can't answer the question, but I can commit to you that I would always be looking for that information and seeking that information.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett? What would you do to stop the loss of teachers and support staff? This affects achievement.
That's a good question. With the relationships that I have with the teachers and the administration, and also the superintendent, I'm able to hear what they have to say. And one of the bigger issues is that the rate of pay, and being that we're in a position that we end of the consolidation, of course, we put two districts together that was in deficits, and so we have to be very careful what we give out because we don't want to end up the way that we were. Piggybacking on that, I do believe teachers, in time, need to increase their wages, feel more important, feel more empowerment, but I do that, I believe, that will come when we get the community behind us and support the district and be on one accord instead of dividing the district. Then the teachers will feel the support. And see, the thing about it is, when we make decisions like this and we come to things like this, we need to ask the kids, what do they think? And I think a lot of times, the kids are missing in the answers that we need in order to get problems that we have solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ragland? Another audience question. What initiatives would you like to implement to engage students towards higher education?
Well, I want every child to feel that there's something for them here at Ypsilanti Community Schools. I think the kids, out of everyone that is consolidation, have been the ones that have come together the best. I mean, they came up with their mascot, they came up with their uniforms. They're taking them on, and the thing we want to raise here is achievement. I want every kid to feel like they're valued. I would like to hear from them more. I mean, we've done some surveying. I want to see the kids get what they want out of this community. I want to hear from their parents, obviously, too, but educating kids is the very first thing we want to do. We want to raise our math levels. We want to raise our reading levels, but we want every kid to know that, hey, if they want a college education, they can get it. If they want to be a person who has a trade, they can get it. Whatever they want to achieve in life, I want them to find it right here at Ypsilanti Community Schools.
Thank you. Mr. Wildy? What are your plans to address the achievement gap that continues to plague our students of color?
Well, one of the ways that you can close the achievement gap is by getting the students to own what their future's going to be. And when they have different expectations than what the district has, it makes it more difficult for them to learn. You need to keep them actively involved. You need to give them, you need to find out how they learn. Some people read books and learn from that. A lot of other students need hands-on experience in order to learn things. The New Tech model that we have now and the STEM Academy are both helping with breaking away from traditional book education and giving the students hands-on experience, which a lot of them, that's what they need. The, you know, the students themselves need ownership of their activities and of their destiny and their goal. Too many students are focused specifically on sports as a career, and they don't spend enough time actually working on their academics, and I think that that is one of the larger reasons that the academic gap exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Irvine? Given the large exodus of high-quality teachers, what is your plan to retain and attract high-quality teachers?
I do agree that the first and foremost issue is creating a work environment where people want to stay. It's about having a work environment where people feel honored, where they feel they're treated equitably regardless of what their background is, where they're treated equitably in compensation and in benefits, where they're treated equitably in the voice that they have and the direction that the district goes. Those are all very critical pieces, that if any of those are absent, the door, the opportunity to leave is available, and people take it. From the very get-go, I will say that the staff in Ypsilanti have never been there about money. They've never been there about anything except students, and the commitment and the love and the relationship they have with students. And it takes a whole lot to uproot them. We have had teachers who, after a couple of years, will move off to the very first teacher vacancy off in Saline, or the very first teacher vacancy in Lincoln, or in Ann Arbor. Those aren't the teachers that we're seeing leave, and the staff that we're seeing leave. We are seeing the people who are the anchors, who have been here, veteran teachers for 15, 20 years. Those are the people that are leaving, and it was not because the district did not choose to keep them. It is because they realized they had no place in this district any longer, and that is a tragedy.
Thank you. Ms. Champagne? Would you support a preschool option for families who do not qualify for Head Start or Grade Starts? Why or why not?
Yes. I don't know the exact research, but I do know that the years leading up to kindergarten are extremely are extremely important. And if we could increase our success rate by providing more resources and education for the zero, or two, or three, or whatever it takes to kindergarten, if we had the resources to do that, absolutely, I think it's something we should do.
Thank you. Ms. Nidikar Horn? As a resident of Ipsy School District since 1950 and having two children in Ipsy Schools graduating in 1971 and 1977 from Ypsilanti High School, safety is one key issue. What would you do if elected to protect our children's safety and welfare?
Thank you. I think that we, as a community, as in the school community and the community surrounding the schools, we need to work more together. I know they have security in schools and stuff. It always bothered me when you have security in schools because I'm like, are the kids that bad, or is it the people that's coming in that's the problem? I know that kids get into fights and different things like that, but I think we need to teach children or young people how to resolve issues without fighting and all that. Because I really don't like security, but I do want kids to be safe. And if kids aren't feeling safe in school, then either one, they're not going to come to this school, or they won't do well in their classes. So my thing is, yes, kids do need to feel safe. I understand what it means to feel safe in schools because both my daughters were bullied during their middle school years. And my youngest one would not. She was a typical test book case that, I don't want to go to school. Can we move? Can we do this? So instead of having security, or if we are going to have security, all of us work together to make sure our schools are safe.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkins? What are your plans for increasing staff morale, including support staff?
I think in order to increase staff morale, we have to do something really internally about how we change the perception of not only our community but our district. I think we face a lot of challenges as a community with many people judging what we've done, what we're going to do. And I think internally, we have to feel good about what's happening in our district. And in order to do that, we have to make some changes to the things that are not working so well, and look at the things that are working well, and begin to make some changes to improve so that our staff feel that they're valued, they're appreciated, because they work with our children every single day. But I will say, without the children here in this district, we don't, you know, there's really not a need for teachers or staff. So we have to be really conscious about the perception issue that is really facing our community and facing our school district more specifically, because it is really a contributing factor, in my view, as to why so many children are, and families are deciding to leave the district based on a number of reasons that contribute to that. But specifically, our perception issue is one that we have to get under control in terms of how we communicate, how we are transparent, how we value our teachers, how we value our staff. And we can't just say that. We actually have to put these in place so that they feel that when they come to work every day, and then they can go out and share with their friends, their colleagues, how great of a district Ypsilanti Community Schools is, because that's the only way that we'll change the trajectory of where the school district is headed.
Thank you. Ms. Sharif? One person asks, what efforts have been made to see why people are moving their students, and I believe they made moving their students away out of the district?
I believe that people are moving their children out of the district because they feel like maybe their students aren't performing to the standards that they want. I also think that our teachers are also, and our staff members, such as like support staff, administrators, are also champions of our community. So if they don't feel like this environment is the best for children, those are the individuals that are going to tell our parents and our children, I think that elsewhere may be better. So I think that the first thing is to ensure that our teachers feel safe, they feel like their voice has validity. And I think that that can push us in a direction where we can actually have conversations. When we think about cutting teachers, when we think about not treating teachers the way they should be treated, you have to understand when that teacher leaves, whether involuntary or voluntary, that student leaves. Because Ypsilanti is very unique. Our teachers aren't teachers that come from far out to our district. Our teachers are community members, and they're our constituents. And so until we treat them as such, we will see our children leave with our teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Bates? Would you attempt to bring back staff who has departed since the consolidation? How would you go about it?
When we consolidated the district, we involved the community in establishing a vision, five pillars around which to construct the district. The door will always be open to anybody who wants to help this community fulfill that vision for our students and for our community. Does that mean that we would invite them back? Absolutely, if they're attuned to that vision. By the same token, one of the things that we can sometimes lose track of is, as we've had some staff turnover, it's given us the opportunity to hire some really, really energetic, exciting young people from the university that are bringing wonderful talents with them into our classrooms and starting, in some cases, some very exciting programs on their own academic games and things like that. I think that, you know, as a board and as a community, we need to maintain our commitment to that vision, to be the first choice for our community, and then always keep that door open and put in place processes that give us the opportunity to hire the most qualified staff, whoever that might happen to be at any particular given moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchman? One audience member asks, how can YCS work with EMU in partnership for mutual benefit?
You know, I got my teaching certificate from Eastern. The knowledge that exists within that institution is quite phenomenal. And I know that they've been responsible for a number of changes that have occurred in Ipsy School District and in a number of other school districts. Utilizing their expertise in a variety of different, you know, demands, I think would be absolutely invaluable.
Thank you. Mr. Myers? Okay. When will we invest in serious and relevant curriculum, and how will you approach this?
Well, the curriculum question is being currently addressed by our superintendent right now. That was one of the major goals for YCS 2.0. So money and resources are being invested in that as we speak. It is important to have a relevant curriculum for our students in this time. So that was one of the things that the past school districts didn't have that was really relevant. We saw that in our audits as a board, so we are addressing that now. We weren't able to really address that in YCS 1.0 with all the consolidating that was happening. But right now, we know as a board and as administration, that curriculum is very important. So now we're coming up with that. And I believe by the end of this year, or towards the beginning of next year, we will have that in place.
Thank you. And tonight's last word is from Ms. Sheila Edwards. Okay. With all of the alternatives to the high school that the district offers, what do you see as the role of YCHS?
I was part of a small group of people who went out and did focus groups this spring with the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. Tyler joined me for that. And we asked them to be honest about their experience here. And I can tell you that one thing that resonated very, very strongly among all the students was the fact that they had choices. They really liked the choices here in Ypsilanti, and that's a strength that we have here. We can offer a lot of things to a lot of kids, no matter who you are, what your path is. We've got a program. So I'd like to mention that we had over 200 kids dual-enrolled in our, through ECA and through WCC. YCS has the highest number of dual-enrolled students at Washtenaw of any public school in Washtenaw County. That's with the exception of WTMC, which is on Washtenaw's campus. But aside from them, we're sending a lot of kids to college. They're taking classes and they're passing. They're taking things that wouldn't necessarily be offered at a normal, comprehensive high school. So I'm proud of the things that we've been able to expand, the programs that we've put in place. It all contributes to achievement here in Ypsilanti. Of course, I want to take a moment and say that we're starting on the other end as well with expanding our preschool programs, because you need to have a pipeline. Kids need to be ready for kindergarten and as they move on up the road. So that's been one of the things that I've been most proud of about being a board member here, is that we listened to the community. When the community came together, we were able to focus on some things that were very important, and I think we've been making tremendous progress. I'd like to thank everybody for sticking with us. There are a lot of folks here in the room who haven't given up. And I hope that you're beginning to feel like you're seeing some results of our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes tonight's, excuse me, I'm sorry. That concludes tonight's forum. And before we hear a few closing remarks from Ben, I'd like to take a moment to very sincerely thank the candidates, not only for giving up two hours of their time on a Monday night so that we have a chance to hear their thoughts and their respective voices, but also for very graciously and kindly putting up with a somewhat awkward technical setup combined with a large group of people. So thank you for that. And why don't we take a moment, audience, to show our appreciation? Ben, would you like to give a few closing remarks?
Thank everybody, For a Better Ipsy is so thankful that everybody came out, the audience, of course, all the candidates, like incredible turnout. And then just once again, we wanted to thank everybody who has helped. Ypsilanti Community Schools for hosting, Martha Schmidt of Worm Farm Recordings for filming, Jessie Miller for sound, Grant Schaefer and Marta Valades for note cards, Fritz Passo for general helpfulness, Nancy Shuey and the whole League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor Area for guidance. And I forgot to mention earlier, thank you so much for press coverage of this, Bob Echols from WEMU, Matt Dur from MLive. I believe somebody is here from Washtenaw now, yep. And Mark Maynard from markmaynard.com. And also, if you are interested, tomorrow, there is going to be another Ypsilanti-oriented Candidates Forum. The League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor Area and For a Better Ipsy are presenting a City Council Candidates Forum, which will be at 7:00 PM at the Ypsilanti Senior Center on Congress, where you will hear from the two candidates running for City Council Person in Ward One, Nicole Brown and Sigrid Melvin, and the two people running for City Council Person in Ward Three, Brian Robb and Tyler Weston. And with further closing remarks, Nancy Shuey, co-Board President of League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor Area.
Well, thank you to the candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and to all of you, our audience, for taking your evening to be with us. For additional balanced, nonpartisan voter information, the League has an online voter guide. You can go to vote411.org, enter your address, and all of the candidates and issues that you will be able to vote on will be there. The entire county is on there. So if you want to know who you should vote for, not only for school board, but for county commissioner, city council, Supreme Court justices of the state, it's all on there. So please take this opportunity to use that. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for voting on Tuesday, November 4th. Good night.